If you'd like, please feel free to join us.
Father heaven, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this great nation, we thank you for this city, we thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us, we pray for our decisions tonight, Lord, that it will be well thought of and fair and you know, these things are paid in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting to order, Mr. Garrett, would you call the row?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledler?
Here.
And we have a group with us tonight, the UCA government and local and state government class? Welcome.
Welcome.
You should have received copies of the September tenth, two thousand nineteen city council minutes, any corrections, comments, or changes? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
This is five to zero. Our first order of business this meeting will be the approval of the monthly financial report ending August thirty first, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Whingingham, I think you have some good news for us to start off with, and then uh, tell us what you got.
Uh, speaking about the the financials, you got a little bit of good news, the sales tax was a positive number again uh, over the same month last year, not a huge number, it was only a little over two and a half percent, that puts us up uh, two point six percent year to date. And then if you'll notice that permit revenue number there, we've already collected everything we budgeted this year, and permit revenue, which is a sign of a healthy construction, overall economy for the city, uh, you know, things, things are being built, development is happening. Just to give you some numbers to compare, last year, excuse me, last year, our permanent revenue was about five hundred and twenty thousand. So, we've already collected four fifty this year, hopefully we'll break that five twenty mark and and show an increase, nineteen over eighteen for permit revenue. We got, I'll just go ahead and hit on it, we got sales tax numbers today uh, for July sales, which is when the online sales tax took effect. There is no separate breakout of that number, we don't know what online sales were, and I don't know if the state knows. The state provides, the only, the only information the state will provide to us is sales by business category, and online sales is not a business category. Let's say, uh, the Home Depot in Conway, you know, when they make sales, they don't record as far as their sales tax, they don't show that as an online sales tax revenue, that's a revenue from a a home improvement store, or something of that nature, if that, if that makes sense to everybody. But overall, it was up almost nine percent, so that's the second biggest increase this year, the other one, we had a thirteen percent increase, but I don't think that was necessarily, sales were up that much, I think that had to have been a correction for something prior to that, but the news is good, online sales tax should certainly benefit the city of Conway. Uh, we've estimated it could be in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range on an annual basis, so we'll keep an eye on that through the rest of the months this year and adjust our budget projections for twenty twenty sales tax revenue accordingly, and hopefully, hopefully show a decent increase there. And that's all the comments I've got, mayor, unless the council has any questions or comments.
Take a motion, council, approve?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financial report, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Whingingham.
Yes, sir.
Our first order of business will be, or second order actually, will be a resolution acknowledging the intent of the city of Conway for the purpose of assist assisting in the financing of industrial facility expansions for SFI here in Conway, and Mr. Wilburn is here, if y'all have any questions for Gordon Wilburn.
Good evening, I would just point out, this is just a resolution, an intent, uh, we would be back with an ordinance in a public hearing at some point in the future, probably in October would be the plan, but if not, uh, in November, where there would be more description of the project and exactly what the uh, bonds would look like, but this resolution would enable the company to have some confidence of the support and to move forward with the expansion.
I move for adoption of the resolution, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to disclose that my daughter works for SFI.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
On the record.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It'll be resolution R nineteen forty-eight, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn.
Next, we have consideration to prove the nomination of Jennifer Welter to the housing authority board, this will be a five-year term on the board, and uh, I don't think you may speak there, anyways, for a five-year term, if there's no questions there, I'll take a motion to uh,
So moved.
Second? Yeah, a motion and a second to appoint Mrs. Jennifer Welter to the housing authority board for a five-year term. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next, we have a, let's see. Mr. Hawkins, I think it's at this point I turn it over to you, do I not?
I'm, I'm, I can do whatever you'd like.
I was just hammering along, I was just hammering along, man.
I just, it's that, it's that beard, it's sketchy kinda.
You can wait, go on, Colorado. Rocky Mountain High. Anyway, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector place some liens on property at different locations around the city as a result of incurred expenses, we have three of those locations tonight, Missy, did we have any that showed up late? Are we running all three of them? Yeah, okay, very good. First place then is number twenty-six Briarwood Circle, is there an owner or representative of an owner from twenty-six Briarwood Circle with us tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone in attendance, uh, so we have a resolution to read for this, it's resolution R nineteen forty-nine.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to assess fees against property located at twenty-six Briarwood Circle in the amount of one forty-eight eighty-eight for expenses incurred by the city, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero, Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is location at twenty-one eleven Tyler Street, we have, do we have an owner or representative of an owner from twenty-one eleven Tyler Street with us tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone present, so we have a resolution for this item, it's resolution R nineteen fifty.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution for expenses of one sixty thirty-four incurred by the city at twenty-one eleven Tyler, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero, Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is location at thirteen sixty-three Mitchell Street, is there an owner or representative of an owner at thirteen sixty-three Mitchell Street? Would you come forward, please, and give us your name and your address? Which probably is gonna be thirteen sixty-three Mitchell Street.
My name is Carly Bowling, and I'm the owner um, of thirteen sixty-three Mitchell Street. I'm sorry, I've never been here before.
That's okay.
It's alright, that is alright.
Um, so, the day that we got the ticket, or they came and mowed our yard, we had actually mowed it two days before, it didn't get any kind of warning or anything about them coming, uh, that time around, we did have one previous where we, I was in the wrong, and they did come mow it, and I paid that ticket. But for this one, I, I got a new job, I'm working sixty hours a week, so I'm not mowing my yard, I know how I should, but I've been trying to keep up with it. I, I mean, I, as I said, I'd mowed it two days before, when they came and mowed it, they completely, like, they had to mow it so short that it scalped most of my yard, most of my yard is dead, and I do have pictures of that on my phone, I could show you. They also cut down a tree and left the tree just in place, and we had to drag it out to the road, and um, when they cut the bushes, they just shoved it all underneath the bushes.
Okay. Council, any questions? Would you, would you have a seat right there, I'd like to bring code enforcement up?
My name's Spencer Clausen, I'm the code enforcement officer that handled thirteen sixty-three Mitchell Street. With regards to the notifications that were given in July eighteenth, twenty nineteen, I left a violation, which is kind of the second step in our process, typically people get an orange door hanger, and then it'll go to a green door hanger, then they're certified mail that's sent. This address has been a repeat offender before, and they, they kind of know what's going on, so we just started with the violation. That's really kind of up to our discretion, it's not uncommon for us to start at the, which practically the second step. We sent certified letters on four one after I did a recheck on seven twenty-five, and no progress was made. Property was re-inspected on eight twelve, again, no progress was made, and we requested the city cleanup. The final comple- uh, the final cleanup was completed at eight fifteen, and the backyard was included on the original violation, the backyard, i- it's almost impassable, there's overgrowth, bamboo, it's hanging over fences, it's very difficult to get to and mow, and our limitations with physical plant to get into people's backyards, we're very limited to what we can do. And uh, so, what we did was we got what we could get, we cleaned it up, I've got pictures here of the before and after pics from that cleanup, and as you'll see, there's plenty of overgrowth, uh, to speak to her issue with the tree down, I, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with that, I was there when it happened, I've got pictures here uh, of the tree up after the cleanup, and it's still standing. I did drive by the property, uh, two or three days later, and did notice that there was a tree down that had been drugged to the, to the front of the property um, after a week or so. I, I stand by what we did, it needed to be cleaned up, like I said, I've got pictures if you'd like to look at them, and uh, we, we took care, this, this cleanup, in fact, we had a neighbor come over and thank us for cleaning it up, saying it was the best it's looked in years. So, this is something that, um, I feel like it was handled correctly from beginning to end.
Mr. Clausen, do you, you don't have any knowledge of this tree going down?
No, sir, I've got a picture right here of the house after the cleanup, and the tree I'm aware that was downed, um, is standing in this picture, if you'd like to look at it.
If I could, yeah. Ms. Carly, was that tree dead?
No, it wasn't until after it got down, uh, it was alive.
That's not her.
Yes, it was, a couple days later, the storm came through, and it fell down, but the tree had been halfway cut already. And we haven't messed with that tree at all.
Which one?
That's the tree in question.
Would you step up, please, sir, and state your name, please?
My name is Robert Bell. I had had, um, previous notifications on a truck that was located at the property, and um, I had gotten it up to code and moved it so that it wouldn't be towed or messed with or what have you, like I said, fixed it, got all the tires fixed and everything. And it was, it was still taken before the allotted thirty days had, had, had come up. The city paid, paid my tow fees when, when I brought it up to the necessary parties, the city did pay my tow fees, but when it came time, I, I talked to the tow truck operator, and I said, hey, okay, so I'm, I'm paid up, I need, need you to go put it back. You know, you just, you know, there was a little boo-boo made, uh, and he refused, but that's a, a separate issue I'm gonna have to have with the Arkansas Tow and Recovery Board. But uh, you know, the, the tree in question, uh, it was, I didn't even notice it at first either, but if you look in, in that photo, I don't know what the, the after photo shows, but it's a, it's a fairly tall tree, and what was done is it was cut down and it was stood back up and leaned against, against the property. I didn't even realize that it had been cut until a couple days later, we had a rather blustery storm blow through, and we woke up the morning after, and it was laying in my neighbor's yard. So, yeah, it, the, the tree was cut, and upon inspection, it was, it's a clean cut, it wasn't broke or anything like that, it was clearly gone after with a saw. You know, and I'm assuming it was code enforcement, I don't know why anyone else would just take it upon themselves to go and, and cut down some, someone else's tree on, that's on their property, you know? So, I, I feel like I can reasonably assume that it was code enforcement, it was done, you know, around, around that same time, or I assume it to be, because like I said, it was tactfully raised upright back against the house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bell.
Nowhere on any of this that we're talking about tonight has anything to do with the vehicle being towed. I, I can speak to performance of physical plant, I was there and took, and I took after pictures. I didn't see a tree that had been cut down and then propped up next to the house, uh, that's, if they had removed a tree, they would have hauled it off, I can speak to their performance on many cleanups, and that's not anything that they would have done.
Ms. Carly, do you have any pictures that would show that that tree had been cut?
No, I didn't get any pictures of the tree, I just have it where it was fell down.
Okay, and you said there was a storm that did come through?
Yes.
Okay. About what date?
I mean, it's, it's still a clean cut, I mean, if we need to come back for another council meeting, that's absolutely.
Please don't. It, I don't have any pictures of it, uh, the storm did come through, but I mean, I did see it, and it was clean cut, I, it didn't look like it, I mean, uh, like a storm on it over or anything like that, and it's like right up against my house at the same time, so I should have been able to hold it, I guess you could say.
Okay, alright.
And if, if I may, um, there's a lot more to this than, than this tree, there's tall grass, the, the yard in the back continues to be out of ordinance, we've issued a citation for that.
I've never heard anything, I've talked to them multiple times, and they've never said anything about my backyard, I did.
On.
If you would, ma'am, let him finish, then, then you, then you come back up to the podium, thank you.
Uh, the, on the eighteenth of July, uh, this is the violation that I issued, it says, mow entire property, front and backyards, clean all junk off property, including porch. That, I mean, what, like I said, what we're here today to talk about is a lot more than this tree, there was a trailer full of trash and garbage that was hauled off, that was in front of the yard, uh, in addition to, uh, some of this, the landscaping that we did, so.
But that was, was that a previous one that she paid already?
No, no, the.
That's included in this?
More things had accumulated on the porch, um, furniture, trash, junk, I've got, I've got pictures here if you'd like to see it, and uh,
Missy emailed us pictures.
Certainly. Uh, no, ma'am, I've got pictures of those, I'd be glad to provide for you, but here, this right here is the house that it was done, this is a trailer. It's a, it's a double axled dump trailer that everything on there is loaded from your property, okay? That stuff that was on the porch, not, not just the porch, but other overgrown thing was hauled off.
Yeah, we've got them, Missy. Yeah, Missy sent them to us.
Okay, so you have to pick.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was looking at there, yeah.
I, I have a question, and I think, ma'am, you said that you, you cut the grass, and then they came back and cut that two days later?
No, sir, um, the, uh, the grass in places had, had been cut, they, they had made an attempt, uh, side yard, front, around the bushes, around that, that had not been gotten in, and of course, the backyard had not been hit. Uh, we were there after a long process of trying to get this into compliance, uh, and while we were there, we, we did cut the yard, now, there was some grass that was probably, had been cut recently, that we went over to just kind of make it uniform, but I would say two-thirds of the yard had not been, had not been addressed, and, and, and none of the backyard, so. Ma'am, do you want to say something else?
Um, I said, I, yes, my backyard is overrun, it's been overrun since I got pregnant. Since I got pregnant two years ago, and it's just been a battle, because I'm trying to pay all my bills, I'm trying to catch up with everything. I, as I said, I didn't know the backyard was part of it, I thought it was just what you could see from the road. Yes, this last one did say entire property, and that's when I figured they're talking about the backyard, but the previous ones never said anything about the backyard. I have talked to them multiple times, they've never said anything about the backyard, when I went up there and paid it the first time, they never said anything about the backyard. So, this is the first time I'm hearing anything about the backyard, and I haven't had time to actually get back there and attack it, because I'm working for Spirit Halloween, I'm the manager there, I work sixty hours a week, by the time I get home, it's dark, I barely spend time with my kid, it's a risk.
That's okay, that's okay. Take your time, we're, we're no hurry, you take your time.
That's funny.
Is that all? Mr. Bell, would you like to speak?
Yeah, um, uh, it, it's like she said, uh, the first we actually got any kind of citation for the backyard was recently, and we have an actual court date for that, it wasn't a notice, this or that or the other, and that's what kind of confused us about all this, was because things, you know, did kind of go out of order, there was no, uh, warning for, for the, the mowing that happened, uh, like I said, we had mowed it, uh, and been mowing it, I want to say, a full three or four weeks before they came through and scalped it. Now, I've, I've been a professional landscaper before, and I know the equipment, and I know how it works, they had to have come through with their decks on point two five. And then whenever they came through and, and completely savaged the front yard to, you know, show, show their face, make an appearance, they butchered the hedges, they put the hedges, I don't know if they're gonna make it, uh, poor little boxwoods, but they also took about a, a four or five foot swath out of my neighbor's yard. And he is adamant about his yard, whenever he came out and saw what they had done to, to hi- his section of it, he was sick, he was livid. But, uh, he actually declines to, uh, to, to be with us today, uh, for fear of retaliation. I, I can't help but feel like, uh, you know, there's a lot of other houses on, on, on the block, you know, that, that also suffer from various, uh, I guess, uh, code breaks, you know, um, but I can't help but feel like we've been targeted, especially, you know, after they come through and completely mowed on point two five, uh, after we already mowed. I mean, uh, if they hadn't, you know, delivered the citation for the backyard maybe previously or something like that, we could have, you know, started on that, uh, I probably have some more free time in the immediate future to definitely do something with that, and make it, make the attempt and, and, and do stuff with that, and have it removed from the property. But, you know, it's, like she said, the first notice we got, the fir- is, is that citation we found taped to the door. You know? And I mean, uh, I'm, I'm scared to have my truck there, I'm scared it's gonna get, you know, took off, uh, and I, I don't know what all the, the, the stuff was in the, in the photo, but the times that they've come out, I, I also, I feel like, um, the bills don't reflect, the last time they came out and didn't, you know, mow or do anything, they just, you know, maybe removed a few pieces of trash, uh, we didn't even know that they had been there until we got the bill for it. You know, so clearly, uh, they can't, can't be doing too terribly much, you know, if, if, like I said, and that was the last bill, uh, it was, I think, two twenty-five, this one was two twelve. And if, uh, this last time they came out and hauled a trailer full of trash on top of having dudes work heavy equipment on the property, I just, I don't understand how the bills reflect either. I feel like, you know, if, if we're gonna be penalized for it, that should be more. You know, and I'm not trying to dig myself a deeper hole, but there's, you know, just a lot of, you know, shades or shades of gray in there that just, that, they don't add up.
You can get with Missy, uh, that works in that office, and she, she can show you all that, as how, on how they came up with their numbers.
The bushes don't, the bushes don't look scalped, I mean, based off these pictures right here, the grass looks, it looks low, it looks like a different color from your neighbors that you said, takes meticulous care of it, it looks about the same length as your neighbor's grass, but yours is brown due to possibly it being higher, right, and, you know, but it was pretty tall, right, so.
No, we just mowed it, it wasn't.
Okay. Why, why do we, we were asking earlier, why do we tr- do we always trim bushes?
There is, uh, part of the ordinance.
Step, step up to the, sorry.
Part of the ordinance, uh, bushes cannot be over a certain height blocking windows and railings, uh, the, the porch railing. On this, I'd like to just respond to a few things that she said, just so that y'all have it, uh, have clarification, she says she was notified of the front or backyard situation. July eighteenth right here, it's in my own handwriting, it says, please mow entire property, front and back, she was given this violation, mailed a certified letter, and a regular letter was sent to her, regular mail. So, there, there's plenty of notification, uh, like I said, that we're still kind of in the process of correcting this with the citation. It's, if, for, for us, uh, as a department, it's easier for us to issue citations, make them go to court, and have a judge order them to clean their backyard than it is to get the search warrant and all the required, the, the necessary things for us to get into the backyard and, and cut the property and get them into compliance.
So, so what you're telling me is y'all really did not do anything to the backyard, that's what this court date is for, to address the backyard?
The backyard, yes, sir, it was written up at this time, on July eighteenth, it has not been corrected yet, that's why they received a citation.
Okay, and so I'm assuming if they correct it themselves before the court date, then the court date probably goes away?
Absolutely, we'll, we'll null process it, that's something that, uh, that Evan and I have talked about, uh, before we, with. Absolutely. We'll, we'll null process. That's something that, uh, that Evan and I have talked about, uh, before with, with previous people. It's, it, it's just, uh, we are, we are limited in what we can do as far as like inside and outside of people's property. And when you give a citation, that's, it's, it's a little more than a nudge, but if they, uh, follow through to the court date and are, are found to be in violation, then the judge can request that they, uh, they get into compliance or be found in contempt of court. It's just a little extra push.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I guess I have a couple of photos myself to kind of put into perspective. They said that the yard was not brown and they did not, uh, scalp it.
I didn't say it wasn't brown. I said it was brown, but it was about the same length as your neighbor's.
Well, I have a photo for that as well. Alright. My neighbor keeps his grass at about a solid three inches. Uh, after I had mowed mine, mine was probably about four and a half or so. Uh, I just got a single bush mower. It's not anything fancy. It's older. I try not to wear it out. But, um, that's, uh, quite the contrast. Like I said, we had just mowed. Uh, so, uh, they had to, had to do that in order to show their, show their face.
Did you, have you seen these pictures that they took?
Uh, I have not, actually.
Come look at this one.
I've got a copy.
Yeah. Look, that, that one didn't show anything like what you.
That was probably after I mowed it. That looks more like an accurate before picture from, from.
But all the tre- hedges are tramps. That's after our crew did it.
Yeah, is that you?
No, that is not me.
Okay. So that's our crew doing it then, right?
Yeah, this is, the, the tr- hedges are tramps. This is after we did it.
Well, I mean, I feel like the hedges could have been trimmed and then that picture taken and then it was.
No, if this is mowed down.
I think that's how it works.
That, that picture that you showed me, it has that gentleman in the background working on it. So, I mean, we don't know when the photos were taken versus what actually.
Hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I think we have that listed.
Pardon me.
Spencer, can you look at that picture he showed us and see if that is where that would be in part of the yard?
Can I see, uh, take a look at the picture?
Cause that, that grass doesn't look mowed. It looks dead.
Yeah, I don't, that does not look like anything I've seen at his yard. Uh, that is.
To be honest, that section.
Odd close up of, of something, but I can't identify that as being his yard.
To be honest, that's actually not my yard. That's the, the, the five or six foot swath of my neighbor's yard that he also destroyed.
So that, so that picture's not your yard?
I was taking, part of it's probably my yard, but where it was taken, where the property line is, uh, like I said, the, the mowers had to have gone at least two mower decks outside of the, the actual property. And given how, how, uh, different the grasses are maintained, I feel like the property line should have been super clear. But it was done that way on both sides. Now, my other neighbor, he's not quite as adamant about his lawn as, uh, uh, the other gentleman is. Uh, he's actually, uh, out of residence at the moment. Uh, but there is an equally large, uh, four or five foot swath mowed off of, uh, his property as well. I mean.
That shows that it is our yard.
May I take a look at that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and, uh, I noticed in this, the, uh, the tree is down and brown on the side of your house. So that would be, that would be a week or so after.
No, two days. It was two days after.
The tree is down and, and dead. Uh.
I believe I have pictures of, of the tree while it's, while it's fresher. I, I for sure do.
Sure.
Sure.
So it's two or three days after the tree, after my house. All my yard is dead. I have a short.
Okay, thank you.
It does show our house. It does show our house. If you guys can see here, but this is where the tree is. I guess, uh, I think it's much greener. I think it's much greener. I'm partially colored blind, so I really wouldn't even ask.
So that's the tree down?
Like I said, it's, it's not a small tree. Uh, but, uh, it was, uh, not necessarily propped back up on its stump, but so much is laid over against the house. You know, like, uh, a small detail like that. A small detail like that, like a, a, a tree being just a few feet short, that's not something that you would like necessarily notice or think about, you know? If not for that storm, we might not have even noticed it until it did turn brown and start to die and stuff. But it was, uh, it was so large, I had to call, uh, two of my friends, uh, to help me, help me drag it to the weight. I'm gonna, uh, a foot around, a solid two or three hundred pounds-ish, give or take. It was large enough that I couldn't do it by myself.
Do you live at this residence also?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. And you're, you, you, you couldn't keep it mowed? Being a professional landscaper?
I work as well.
Okay.
And there's only so, so many hours in the day. The jobs that we, we maintain, you know, have to work.
Well, we're.
We, we could probably talk about this all night, but we need to probably.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Thank you for your comments, everyone.
Was there anything else anybody wants to say, though? Pardon it. I, I mean, I just find hard to believe that anybody would cut down a tree and prop it back up. And I'm, we proceed as is?
Does, uh, di- is it always mowed that short? Is it always mowed that short? On the other pictures that he showed, it's, or that, that, um, she showed, it seemed that it was just a tad short. I mean, I don't.
Uh, as far as what, as far as what we cut.
Right.
I don't know what setting they put the mowers on. I mean, I know that when, when they go out to, to clean up a job, they cut it. It typically looks good to me in my eyes. I'm, I'm the landscaper and like that, but i- there's not an attempt to, uh, to scalp a yard, kill the grass, anything like that. It's, it's probably cut at the same level. They cut, uh, grass around the, the cities, the, the city maintains. I can't imagine they drop it any lower for any reason.
Fair enough.
I have a motion. Do we have a second to proceed?
Do we have a motion?
I have my.
Mr. Graham's made a motion. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for property located at thirteen sixty-three Mitchell in the amount of two sixty-three ninety-four for expenses incurred by the city. Any further discussion?
Can.
Yes, ma'am.
Evan, would you explain legally what a lien is and what it isn't?
A lien's placed on a property that has to be paid before the property is sold.
Okay. So it's not something that has to be paid today, next week?
No, ma'am.
Only when it's sold.
Or, or before.
Or before, yes.
Can be paid off before, before the property sold, but it must be paid before the property actually changes.
I just wanted to make sure the homeowner understood.
Oh, next year before they pay partial property taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't know that either.
I didn't know that.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That'd be resolution R nineteen fifty-one.
Six zero. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, resolution to condemn a structure at four seventy-five East Robbins, number one hundred eighty-three. And this resolution is R nineteen fifty-two.
Do we have anyone who'd like to speak for or against this? Please step to the mic. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir.
My name is Sheila Miller. I live at four seventy-five East Robbins Street, Conway, Arkansas. One minute, I gotta clean my glasses. Okay, I have found that if I write this out for y'all, it's going to go easier. And some people saying with my temper, I can't do it, so therefore I'm going to show them I can. So let's just get started. I've come here tonight to stand up for myself. My name is Sheila Miller. When I let City Code in my house, I was looking for help, not to end up homeless. The first time I, I went to City Code, they asked me if you, you go through with this, what's going to happen to the people out there? So I left. But this time, I'm not leaving. I'm standing up for myself. Not only up to my landlord, the Embodins, but Conway City Code Enforcement. Look, I never planned to do anything like this, so bear with me, people. God creates things in small steps.
I, I understand the glasses. I promise you.
Thinking City Code Enforcement would help me, I let them in my house. I was wrong. They are only about to leave me and my family, my granddaughter, homeless. Homeless. I thought they would make the landlord fix my trailer to code. Their answer is to condemn the only home I have. Yes, my home should be condemned. The whole trailer park should be condemned. But everyone thinks I should keep my mouth shut. How is that fair? I should go away homeless, my story not told, and no one to know how we are living out here. What's there in this statement, but, anyway, it's there here. But anyway, I've come here tonight to stand up for myself. My name is Sheila Miller. When I let City Code in my house, I was looking for help, not to, oh, that's the same page. Excuse me. Woo, doggy. Okay. He's showing me where I'm going.
You're doing fine.
How is this fair? This is all, this all started when I tried to get my landlord, the Embodins, to fix my trailer. Or at least give me the supplies. They fixed nothing and have given me no supplies. Your City Code man, Mr. Spencer, the first day said he was going to get me help. If helping is to make me homeless, I don't need his help. All I know is the law, or the laws are not good for renters in Arkansas. And if you have a bad landlord, you're going to find out just how bad they are. I'm a person fair and good to everyone. All I wanted is a fair, all I want is a fair landlord and a fair City Code Enforcement. We pay her our deposit. We, we and me for sure pay her, her rent. I pay my taxes to Conway on my van every year. That pays whatever y'all want. So asking my City Code Enforcement to help us make the Embodins bring our homes up to code is is fair. Not content, condemning them and leaving us homeless, you're not helping us. By doing this, you, you are making our lives more harder than they are already. So you want to know what I want from my city council tonight? I want you to help me and, and every family renting from the Embodins. Help your poor in your city like you would any member of your city. We understand we are poor. But must we be done like people of a third world country? America prides itself on telling the, the rest of the world, we do our poor, we do our people better than third world countries, even our poor. Show us who live at Oakwood Trailer Park. This is true. Do y'all have any questions for me? If not, I have a list to start with. I have a list of what's going on out there. Do y'all have any questions for our past?
One quick question.
Okay.
Do you own this trailer or is it?
I do not own it. She tried to sell it to me for practically two thousand in a meeting we were in. And you know what I told her she could do? Just use your imagination. Woo, doggy. Okay, so I start with my list?
Yes, ma'am. Sure, sure.
Things wrong. I live, I, I've lived in this trailer park about ten years this time. I've grown up off, out there on my life. This is my second trailer. My first burnt down, number one fifty-four. This one has ha- had fires due to her work, workers not doing the work right, number one eighty-three. She has the whole bathroom running out on the floor, and I ain't lying. Just about every pipe in our trailer runs out on, on the ground. She opens her sewer pipes and lets them run out on the ground. I have my granddaughter here as a witness where the water nearly killed her. The water is making people sick. People are dying of cancer out, out there or, or got it. There are black mold in every, there's black mold in just about every trailer, mine right now. Just about every trailer has holes in the floor, mine right now. Just about every trailer roof is falling in or leaking, mine right now. Sewer leaking from trailers and pipes, mine being one, right now. I'm in. Her maintenance men do not know how to do the work she has them doing, and they do not have the license. That's all I have to say.
When you say she and her, who are you referring to?
The Embodins. I believe I mentioned their name more than once in here. It's the Embodins. It's Oakwood Trailer Park.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. If you would, have a seat right there, hear from Code Enforcement.
Do you have any questions for my granddaughter? She's here to speak about how her mouth erupted in blood and the bad water out there. Sit here and see what they have to ask. She wants y'all to hear what she wants.
Uh, Philip Fletcher, twenty-six fifty-two Bruce Street, Conway, Arkansas. So I'm just here, uh, supporting, uh, Ms. Sheila. I've known her for twelve years. Our original community center in Oakwood was next to her, uh, first trailer that burned down. And then we helped her move into the most recent trailer, which was five years ago. Uh, out there in Oakwood, uh, primarily if we're trying to fix a trailer, it's a trailer that somebody has owned. Uh, our relationship with the Embodins, we don't do much work on trailers they own. Uh, we have a back and forth relationship. Uh, we try to help everybody there as much as possible. Uh, as far as the quality of the trailers in the trailer park, uh, a large majority of them are not in the best condition. Uh, and this has been a reality I've spoken about, uh, before. Uh, there are other trailers out there that are well kept, uh, but they're owned uh, by another family that lives out there, the Mitchell family. Uh, and so the quality of the trailers, you can tell in the trailer park are radically different. As far as, um, you know, for Ms. Sheila specifically, uh, you know, I've seen the trailer and looked at it. It's not habitable, so I agree with, uh, Spencer's conclusions. And I talked to Missy as well on the phone today. Uh, it's not habitable for anybody. And I've talked to Ms. Sheila that, you know, even moving forward with this and her coming tonight, um, still the so, you have to have a solution of where you're going to go to. Alright, and because she's limited on her rent and the amount that she's able to afford and pay, her options are severely limited. So, um, I know this is not up to this body, but, you know, either the Embodins offer her another trailer, uh, or she finds somewhere else to live. But again, uh, the ability to actually afford somewhere else to live based off of what she's paying now, uh, is significantly limited here in the city. Uh, so I would hope, um, this body would take this into consideration. Um, and even to a larger extent, uh, even what, what happened in Brookside. Uh, the effects of what code enforcement is doing has effects. It has effects. I understand what she was trying to do. She was simply trying to get her home fixed as best as she understood what code enforcement was supposed to do. So that's reasonable, uh, for her to think that, you know, the city sends somebody else out to force the landlord to fix something. And there's other consequences of that. So you're doing your job, the city's doing their job. But it does create a situation as to where does someone like her and her income go in the city? And I think that's something as far as renter and landlord rights, at some point, this city needs to address. Uh, because she is another example. Uh, even the previous case, I think, is another example that there are people in our city that look at code enforcement completely different and have a completely different understanding of, of what code enforcement does and just their way of life. Uh, and so this, you know, I support Ms. Sheila and what she's up here to do. Um, but understanding as well, uh, this is not going to be the last time. Alright, so, thank you.
My granddaughter wants her chance to speak about what the water nearly did to her out there. Still, I'm sure.
Step up, young lady. Step up, young lady.
You have every right to, she wants to tell you herself. Tell them, Ms., she wants her auntie up here with her.
Sure. If you would, state...
This is my daughter, or you want her to state it?
State her name, please, for the record.
Turn around, granddaughter, and state it.
My name is Chanel.
Their whole name, honey.
Chanel Miller.
Tell them what happened with your mouth.
I was drinking the water and I had, um, some, uh, uh, what's it called, some, uh, blisters in my mouth, and I had a big, uh, bubble on my finger.
And tell them what happened when, when, when Nini rushed you to Baptist that night.
They said...
With your mouth, what happened?
It started bleeding.
Her mouth erupted. And they said that all them germs from that and the water, it spread it to the tips of her fingers. Ask her questions, if you'd like. And we're still, her throat, her throat, is she still taking, uh, cough drops? Is she still having to brush her tongue? And they almost diagnosed us with cancer, like they have several others out there, and I, I tell you, I about lost it. Savon Dragan should tell you, I parked in their driveway and refused to leave. So, I made them come out and push my van, and it didn't need pushing. Okay, I told them it wouldn't start to get the medicines I needed that night to get home. So my granddaughter is walking, living proof of what we're going through out there. And if she would, Crow will be home next month. Crow goes out and helps me hustle supplies. We put, I put my own work and labor into that trailer. Anything from the trimming, matching, to the painting, I've done it since day one. Me and her had to standoff when I asked for linoleum.
Step up to the mic, I'm sorry, I should've asked you to, to the microphone, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you, so...
This all start, well, and you'll see in my texts if you want to, we're... Shirley, pull it up for me and her, talking about Chanel being sick. This all started, and I told her that day in that text, my daughter's gonna pull up, you never seen such a cold-hearted thing? I'm gonna try not to go plum country on you, 'cause the bird about came out of my mouth. There's some rednecks that'd be like, woo, look at our girl go. So I'm gonna tell you something. When she pulls this text up, that is the most cold-heartedest woman I ever seen in my life. Yes, we were in negotiations, and yes, she had decided it was time to tell me she wasn't giving me the linoleum or the things I needed. But I told her, my granddaughter's fighting for her life. They're saying your water is a contributing factor to her fighting for her life. And my granddaughter's not the only one, surely this older woman, she's taken four different, or has took four different antibiotics, and she's went ahead and took another trailer. But I went over there and told her, you're on the same water pipes, don't you drink that water? And she's, and I can get this all gathered up, and let me tell you something. And if you live through what I lived through with this woman, you don't know what a bad landlord is. And I've been to Sacramento, California, all the way to Seattle, Washington, and St. Louis, Missouri, and I've been on my own since I was thirteen years old, and I ain't never... And I've been renting since I was about fifteen, 'cause California don't care as long as you pay. Ever had a landlord, this lowlife is that out there? Did you find where she did that? Shirley, it's, it's, it's Mr. Bowden. And I'm telling you, when you see these texts, if it don't move you to tears, you ain't got a heart. And my baby, she may have touched on it, and she may be here, but she ain't even begin to give you understanding. That was a nightmare. She can't even drink the water. I get my water from my, uh, from Dell, my tire shop man, across from Arby's. We bathe her in it, we got to wash our, our bodies. But she don't drink it.
Conway Corp. water? How is it, how is it?
Her pipes are leaking out. You, you heard where I told you about her opening the sewer and drain, draining it out on the ground? And how all her sewer pipes under the trailers are running out on the ground? She has contaminated the water. Did you find it, Shirley?
That's a pressurized system.
Let me see. She, she has, uh, she has contaminated the water out there. And, um, I'm telling you what, I'm just gonna let him get up and speak while I look for that for y'all. But, but let me tell you something. There ain't nothing like, like, like Shirley and Bob and Bowden, ain't nothing like them. And they could've gave me the linoleum, they got a carpet place. I go in there to keep, have to look at them to pay the rent. I was gonna do the labor.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
And I'm gonna look that up for y'all.
Would you state your name and...
Yes, sir, I'm Spencer Clausen, City Code Enforcement. I'm, uh, I've been dealing with the Embodins at 475 East Robins in Oakwood Village Trailer Park, and that's where Ms. Miller and I met. I love what I do, but one of the most difficult things about it is sometimes, uh, you, you interact with people like, like Ms. Miller that, uh, is living in a terrible condition that, um... The, the, she, she, uh, spoke with me, and she wanted me to come look at her property, said it was, it needed to be condemned. Holes in the floors, rats, mold, unsanitary, sewer, water, all this stuff. And I was already there taking pictures of the outside of the property. Um, it had some, some violations of things that she'd accumulated. Fence made of... Fence made of bed frames and pallets and... And other things, uh, such as that.
I took care of that, he can't tell you I haven't. Now, my brain keeping dangerous.
Ms. Miller, would you let, would you let him speak, please?
When, when she invited me inside to take a look at things, I, uh, I wasn't really sure what I was gonna find, and, uh, I, I was, I was kinda taken aback. It, it wasn't, it wasn't bad shape. This was, uh, around April, April of this year. Uh, we've given time to, for improvements to happen on the outside, on the inside, uh, things of that nature. And this morning, I wanted to go over there and just make sure that Ms. Miller knew that, uh, this was on the agenda tonight, talk about condemnation, and I wanted, I didn't feel good coming up here, trying to, uh, talk about this condemnation and her not have a place to go. So that's one thing that was very important to me, is I wanted to make sure that she had a place to land. If indeed the trailer was condemned, uh, that, that she would not be on the street. That's not my goal at all. That would be an unintended consequence of trying to, to get this trailer, uh, to, to be condemned and hauled off. This trailer, even if she moves out, nobody needs to live there. I've got, I've got pictures here, there is a video. Um, I don't know, I think it's been sent to y'all, I, I hope you've had a chance to watch it. If not, uh, I would love to show it. The, the, the video speaks more than the pictures. We filmed that today. Uh, the bathtub is sinking into the floor, there's sewer water, wastewater, black mold, black in color, and other molds on the ceiling. Uh, and, and one of the bedrooms, there is, uh, there's been so much water leak, it's leaked and kind of render stuff. It's, stuff's covered in mold. She's got a piece of furniture propped up the ceiling in her bedroom. Uh, since I was there in April, there's been two fires, is that correct, due to the wiring?
The, the one where the fire department came out, they came out. She had Rick come in and, where I showed you that first fire in the bedroom, where she just had...
Yes.
Where I blocked it off to keep the kitchen...
By the rat hole?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, she had Rick. It's a thing that has more problems than I would want something plugged in, but there's no electricity in that bedroom without it. Air conditioner won't be on, and I have health problems.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I, I, I agree with her and Dr. Fletcher on what they said, is that it, it does need to be condemned, it's not fit for human habitation. I, I don't know that, uh, your granddaughter lives with you full-time.
Yes, she does.
She does, okay, okay. Uh, in, in...
I have to school every morning.
Okay. There's no, a child does not need to live in this place. I mean, even after leaving today, I had some respiratory problems due to the mold and being in there. There's, uh, holes in the floor, there's a place where a tree had fallen through, and basically they just made it into a window. Uh, holes under mattresses are covering up holes in the floor in the living room. Um, it, it is in a terrible, terrible shape. You know, I, I don't, I don't like coming up here and taking someone's home from them. That's not, that's not what I'm trying to do. She, she let me know that she had an aunt, Peggy, in Melbourne.
I can't go there, because my granddaughter needs me to stay here.
And, and that Dr. Fletcher would help her relocate, and that's, that's what I hope can happen.
I need some help with somebody's help, he doesn't have the money.
Just me and Ms. Miller, thank you.
My daughter, I can't take my granddaughter to my Aunt Peggy, so I will not be leaving Conway.
Like I said, when I spoke with her this morning, we had filmed, and, and things have gotten worse. Due to rain, neglect of maintenance, whatever the situation may be, the trailer has, has gotten worse. There's, there's a place where the wall has separated from the floor, and duct tape covers it so that you can't see the, the ground on the outside. The window unit air conditioner is so heavy, and the wall is, uh, in such rot that it's bowing the wall out, and it's molding all around that just due to the, to the moisture condensation. Uh, it, it's, it's a terrible place for, for somebody to have to live. Um, uh, there's no way to repair this trailer in any kind of livable fashion. It's, I mean, it, it would, it would take a fleet of carpenters, and they would just tear it down to the ground and rebuild something. There's, there's not enough material left there to even hammer on. I mean, it's, it's soft from rot, and it's, it's in bad shape. So, uh, and, like I said, over the times we've visited, I wanted her to understand the consequences of pursuing this condemnation. And, and that's, that's how she's wanted to go with it, and we've given enough time, to hope that, that maybe some situation would change with her, she could find a new place to live before that happened, and, and condemn it without her in there. But after going there today, uh, I, I've got pictures here, these were actually taken today. These are, these are still shots off of the video, and I'd like to pass these around.
And I have that thing about my daughter's cancer, where she got sick with her mouth, and I never wanted it condemned, I wanted help getting it fixed.
That is a place that patches the ceiling that leaks.
It's helping me, I don't need his help.
Counsel, while y'all are looking at those, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna step away for just a minute, I need to talk to the city attorney. He just walked in.
Bring it over here, it's going. I'll take it.
Mr. Fletcher, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there no room anywhere for people like this to go temporarily? That you're aware of?
As far as for a family, sir?
Yes.
No, sir, as far as, uh, with the, uh, three shelters in town, myself, Bethlehem House, and the Women's Shelter, there's no one else for to go. Harbor House, they, they, uh, they focus on women in rehab. Renewal Ranch is men in rehab. So, when a family, uh, is in a situation like this, or an individual, there's no place to go. I mean, you can put them up in a hotel, but that's not economically feasible, and, like, even, you know, churches have moved away from that. A ministry center rarely does that. I rarely help with a hotel, because it's just not economically feasible, uh, for a family to stay that long of a time until you get them into a, uh, a new spot. The majority of families who moved from, uh, Brookside, uh, mo- mo- some of them landed in Glen Echo, uh, because it was bought by a new, uh, owner. Um, but his, his rates are about, uh, five hundred, you know, for a lot, and rent. Two fifty at the bottom, if people, 'cause some of them own their trailers. Uh, so the issue becomes, um, either temporary housing or finding, uh, a place to stay that is equitable, uh, to what a family's been, you know, obviously they can afford in their budget. And so we try to, try to make do as best as possible. They don't have family, um, kinda stuck, 'cause a lot of times it's multiple families that stay together, too. So, uh, we try to do what we can and make do.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I visited with Chuck for, and Evan for just a moment, this is, this is my personal thoughts on this. We, as a body, accomplished absolutely nothing by putting this, this lady on the street. We're, that's not what we're here, we're doing, we, we, we're accomplishing nothing, that's not the right thing to do. What Chuck and Evan and I talked about is, we take no, uh, action on this tonight, and we table it, and give the time. In the meantime, have the property owner come to our next council meeting and explain their side of this and, and how we've got to this point.
And what they can do to fix it?
Yes. And we, we don't, we don't want you out, ma'am. I mean, I, I... On the street. But I appreciate the Code Enforcement Office, because I really do believe in Spencer's heart. He's, he's, he's trying to help you and try to do the right thing. So what we're trying to do here is come to a happy, happy spot.
Maybe he didn't understand when I invited him in, I was wanting help to get it up to code. I just told him that I don't wanna stay angry at him, because I have energy to put somewhere else. When I got emotional as he's reading about my granddaughter being sick, I was having that flashback. I'm gonna tell you, I don't have nothing in my life but my kids and their kids. And my other kids, and I could go just gut wide here and not stick to script, their kids keep me going. "You ain't never," and he's reading it, "you ain't never," till you, you read it. "You ain't never had a landlord." "And my baby's fighting for her life, bleeding out her mouth, you ain't never." "You ain't never."
What, what we're gonna do tonight, Ms. Miller, if it's okay with the council, we're gonna table this, which means you can go back home. Nothing's changed. And in, and in the meantime, we're gonna make contact with the property owner and, uh, and ask them to... Uh, be two weeks from tonight.
Okay, what date exactly would that be?
It's in two weeks?
Might be a longer wait.
Might be a little bit longer.
Yeah, it may be, it depends, it's the, it's the second fourth, second fourth Tuesday.
Can somebody just take my information and contact me or handle that for me?
October?
Phil said he'll handle it.
October eight. October eight, Dr. Fletcher, you'll take care of that? All right, all right, so... I, I'll take a motion to table at this time?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to table this, this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Thank you, counsel, thank you, Ms. Miller, thank you, Spencer. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, sir. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds for the Faulkner County Council on Aging for Transportation Expenses. And we have an ordinance free to read for this item, it's ordinance oh nineteen ninety-nine. Mr. Hawkins, I'm sorry, I was...
That's okay, this is a, uh, this is just a, uh, an accounting ordinance. And we need a motion and a second on this.
This is the one for senior citizens?
Yes.
Uh, I visited with them, uh, they have got a tremendous need over there, and, uh, a lot of the people there, the senior citizens there moving are, are non-ambulatory, and they are helping them get to dialysis, they're helping them get to their doctor's appointments, everything else. And they are shorthanded, they did purchase another bus on their own, but, uh, they said in order to keep that position staffed, they will need these additional funds, uh, through the end of the year.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the th- the three readings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Motion for the adoption of the ordinance along with its emergency clause, and I believe that should be ordinance oh nineteen ninety-nine.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mercy clause, Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Those both passed six to zero. Thank you, and we do appreciate the job that senior citizens program does here in Conway, Arkansas. Feel a tremendous need. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone some property at the northeast corner of the intersection of McNutt Road and London Road, it's currently zoned I-1. Uh, the requested zoning is R-2. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on... I'm looking for the date.
You know when that date was, Levi?
September sixteenth, and the commission voted eight to nothing that the request be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of approval. And we have an ordinance to read for this item, it's ordinance oh nineteen one hundred.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Levi, would you like to explain this?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so item six, applicants requested rezone roughly ten point eight one acres from intermediate industrial to low-density residential. Uh, this is located at the corner of McNutt Road and London Road, and will represent phase three of the Campbell Cove development. Uh, the change from industrial to residential could be classified as a technical downzone in terms of intensity, uh, and would allow for duplex level development. The request received unanimous support of Planning Commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, no questions, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt? All right, Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith? Whoops, Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at twenty twelve Martin Street from R-2A to R-2. Uh, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting September sixteenth of this year. And at that time, the commission voted eight to nothing that the request be sent to city council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this... We have an ordinance to read for this item, it's ordinance oh nineteen one oh one.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
This request is to rezone roughly a third of an acre from two-family residential to low-density res- residential. So that's R-two A to just simply R-two. Uh, this is located at twenty twelve Martin, about one hundred and fifty feet east of Donaghy and Martin intersection. Uh, the rezoning is being sought to accommodate a proposed childcare facility, uh, which will actually be the next item of, for consideration on tonight's agenda. Uh, the request received unanimous support of Planning Commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
For the folks who are watching on TV, would you tell, explain what the difference in R-two and R-two A?
Absolutely, so both allow, uh, for both single-family and two-family development. The R-two A has a slightly larger lot size requirement, uh, and some additional frontage requirements. But, uh, and then, um, so I believe it's ten thousand square feet is required for a duplex in R-two A zoning, which is the existing, what they're changing to is R-two, which has a seventy-five hundred square foot, uh, requirement for duplex development.
Thank you, Levi. Any other questions? Take a motion?
Move for adoption of the ordinance and the emergency clause, if there is one.
There's not one.
There's not one on this? Okay. We have a motion and a, I'm sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Oh nineteen one oh one, Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve the conditional use permit to allow childcare facility at the R-two zoning district at twenty twelve Martin that we just, uh, talked about. As Levi said, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the sixteenth of September, and the commission voted eight, nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval, with conditions that the use shall be subject to development review prior to being commenced due to unauthorized construction occurring on site. Did I read that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, you read it right.
Okay. The applicant shall submit traffic management plan for drop-off and pickup as part of the development review process. All off-street parking shall meet the standards set forth in Articles five oh one and one one oh one of the zoning code. And the expansions or additions of the structure, as well as any changes to the use, shall require an amended or new conditional use permit. And with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this conditional use permit for a childcare facility located at twelve, twenty twelve Martin Street. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow a cellular transmission tower in the C-three zoning district for property at three eight hundred Prince Street. And, uh, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission September sixteenth of this year. They voted eight to nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval, with some conditions that they obtain proper floodplain permit prior to construction, that concrete paving of the driveway is required, and the transmission tower should be constructed within the, uh, sub- submitted plans. Changes to the plans shall require pre-approval, or, I'm sorry, reapproval by the Planning Commission. And with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for a property located at thirty-eight hundred Prince. Any further discussion? I got a little ahead of myself, anyone in the audience? If not, Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
And final item here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve the master street and trail plan to adjust street alignments in central landing area. This was, uh, reviewed by the Planning Commission September sixteenth of this year. And they voted eight to nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And I move that we grant, uh, this, uh, master street plan adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the master street and trail plan. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero. Thank you, Levi. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Our last item, uh, business, now is an orders to approve the changes in the non-uniform pension plan. Uh, Ms. Mel serves on that, as does Mr. Winningham, and we ought to get some good explanations.
You bet. So the plan document that governs the new non-uniform plan, it was drafted by a well-respected attorney in Little Rock who has extensive experience with, uh, retirement plans. Uh, once he, we received that draft back, the previous, or the board that was, as it was previously structured, we, I was not on that board, so I shouldn't say we. That board worked really hard to, to tailor that plan to the city of Conway. Uh, the attorney that drafted it, drafted it with language that's very common for retirement plans, but our plan is not very common. So that's why we put in a lot of work. Since the new administrative committee's been in place, we've continued to meet monthly, as the previous board did. And just through the course of those meetings, we find little instances here and there that we think, you know, need clarification or maybe even changes. So those are the items we've brought, uh, before we denied to make to the plan.
And then you may have hit on, there's no additional cost to the city.
Correct, no additional cost to the city, uh, no change in benefits, um, to the, uh, participants. It's, uh, simply stated, it's clarification on participants' access to their contributions. And then it's a clarifica, or it's a change in how the contributions are taxed.
Thank you, Ms. Winningham.
And, and I'll speak on behalf of the committee, because we went over this and went back and forth and took a lot of time, met with, um, a local CPA to make sure we're thinking about it correctly. And what we found was that there were a number of people, if, if they leave the city to take their contributions back, and it was pre-tax, the country, then they get a penalty plus taxes. And so they were, ended up with a lot less money than they were expecting. And I think that's what triggered the whole conversation. And the other thing I wanna, um, thank Lisa and everybody on the committee, we actually called a, a meeting of all fifty-nine of the employees who were affected, because it's only people on the new plan. Um, and we had a pretty good turnout, it was last week.
It did.
And there was a lot of great discussion, and it kinda started out, well, I think I want my money, more money now and not later. And that's really kind of the, the whole crux of the bulk of this, is, is the before, and is it now? Or is it, you know, in a better tax position later? And the consensus I heard from the employees was the later. Because there was one gentleman who had the same situation, thought he was gonna get a big check, get his contributions back.
And he did, but they were taxed.
Yeah, and had a significant, yeah, significantly less than what he thought.
Whereas if he'd been paying that tax gradually as he made his contributions, he wouldn't have seen that, uh, that effect be so large right there at the end.
So it's really just moving it to be post-tax contribution from a pre-tax contribution, that's probably the biggest change.
Any, any more questions from Ms. Mel or Mr. Winningham?
I don't have any questions, it says that we have an ordinance provided at the meeting.
We do.
I didn't, okay.
Yeah, and the, the ordinance basically just puts into ordinance form the information that was in your packet. The excerpts from the plan document are, are restated in the ordinance and.
I make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a six to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance one oh two, along with the emergency clause. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Is there mercy clause?
Yeah.
All right, mercy clause, Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes. Those both pass six to zero. Ms. Mel, you mentioned Lisa. If Lisa, if you're watching tonight, we all miss you, and we hope you get back soon, hope you're feeling better. Uh, just a reminder, Parks and Recreation Capital Projects, the Aquatic Center, we've moved that to November twelfth for a committee meeting. And the Transit in Conway, we've moved it to November twenty-sixth.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take just one moment and thank Ricky Gully for keeping this information for ten years for us and sending it out. And I thought, thank you very much.
He, uh, not only does he take pictures, he is, he's a, he's a good keeper of Conway history.
Yes, he is. Yes, Ricky is.
Thank you, Ricky.
Can, can we make one quick announcement? Um, there will be a Ward Two meeting on Monday, November fourth at six o'clock at Pleasant Branch Baptist Church. And Mr. Pruitt and I will be hosting that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Food? Food?
No.
You think it'd be catered, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Is that in the budget?
To me, it'd be something to eat and drink. Well, it's real, thank you.
I guess I can make some cookies. I can make some cookies.
All right.